Third place standing will get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everyone has opportunity to review the minutes of March 15th, 2022 meeting?
Yes, I'll make a motion for the minutes of March 15th, 2022.
One second.
Any discussion on Thursday?
Aye.
Audience call Keith.
Hi, thanks everybody for having me. I'm Kenny Loesch Schiner and I work at Hannover College. And I reached out to Kenny, we have an opportunity as part of the federal work study program. The colleges allocated federal work study dollars and we haven't used all of those yet this year. And we have several students who qualify for federal work study who might have the opportunity to do some work and get paid for it with the town of Hannover. So I wanted to approach our students, as you may know, have one class in spring term, so in the month of May, and that might be a good time if there are projects that the town or the community could use students. We thought it might be good to either designate a day or an afternoon, or it could be Saturdays, whatever, to kind of, and then say, hey, students could sign up for these projects. So just wanted to approach the town, see if that might be something that you're interested in. We'll take care of paying them if you can take care of the projects and let us know, you know, what the means are and that kind of thing.
That's a win-win.
I think Keith can probably come up with a lot.
I'm sure there's a lot of things we can come up with, I'm sure. So, is there a specific date?
No, it could be, so our students get back the first, well, it's probably the last Saturday in April, Sunday in April, and then school starts on that Monday, the May 2nd is the first day of spring term. So we were thinking if there could be, it could even be in the afternoon, students were only taking one class, you know, if there were a couple that we could say, oh, hey, you know, and they could maybe sign up for the project, or, you know, I don't know. Anytime in that month. I would say that last week of May, as they're packing up to go home for the summer, is probably, so I'd look at those three weeks from the 2nd to the, what, that would be 21-ish?
And how many students you think roughly?
Well, we have, we have over 248 students that are qualified for work studies. So I don't know that we could get that many, you know, it depends, but, but you know, Kenny, or not Kenny, Keith, I was thinking if there's cleanup projects, you know, if it's a one-off thing, we'll pay them for the whole, you know, if it's four hours, say you need people from noon to four, you know, and that's it, we'll pay them, we just need, you know, ideas for projects, or if it's planting, or if it's cleaning out places, you know, whatever.
It can be dirty work.
It can, absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Okay. We'll definitely come up with a list.
Okay, and if we can get a list, and then I could, if you and I can work on that, and then I can get it out to students to sign up, so then I'd know. And if you can tell me, Keith, about how many people you'd need on the project, you know, and like I said, I didn't, I don't want your guys to have to come in on a Saturday if they don't have to, so we could do it weekdays if that works, but.
Because they need super town supervision of the project.
Okay, we'll figure something out, I thought it wouldn't be a problem, we'll find a way.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Chris Bailey?
I can't.
Say your name.
Oh, well, yeah, it's good to finally get to be here with you all. We've got some updates on the ARP funding and things like that, we're kind of getting those, kind of narrow down with Barnes and Thornburg, so it's gonna be able to get, hopefully get a little more complete rundown than I could, we're just still tweaking the last little few numbers, but I know the, like, our local volunteer fire companies, we've all got right at a hundred thousand for, you know, for sure handover fire department, and then the water department, we've got right up a hundred there for your water meters and things, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah, we're, and we're still tweaking that other, that's the big one off there. The other, that's that $250,000 thing that we're kind of bouncing around with some other things, Chelsea Jubilee, we're gonna have some small festivals out, you know, all the 501(c)(3), nonprofit folks who've lost a lot of money, couldn't do fundraisers during the COVID, so kind of reaching out to them and make sure that they can keep these little festivals, our little town, little communities thriving, and those little exciting things. I don't know about y'all, I'm from Canaan, so I don't, don't sound wrong, but that little fall festival just meant so much to me growing up, and I just really like to not see it go away. So I think this is encouraging that the government has handed these ARP funds down. This will probably be a one-time deal, we'll probably never see this again. Hopefully we never see COVID again, so.
Right, right.
Never see it again, but it's nice that this money has trickled down to us so that we can do some things like this. So to me, it's exciting, and especially being a volunteer farmer at Canaan also, I mean, I don't know if anybody else out here is a volunteer farmer, boy, fish fries and all the work you do to fundraise to pay for your turnout here, you gotta buy that every seven years, and ours is over, what, seventeen thousand dollars, you know? Kind of, COVID happened and you kind of had to make your own payments because you couldn't fundraise, so these things are good for our community, this ARP fund, so. I'm excited, I could read you a little bit more off there, but again, it's not completely finalized yet, but, boy, we're getting it real close.
Dude.
Thank you for letting me get up and say something. If you have any questions, okay, or if you want questions later too, I'll hang around.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Rick?
I just wanted to update you a little bit on what's going on, mainly with the COVID enforcement area. I've been meeting with Devin, we've kind of streamlined our process for COVID enforcement. I've got it sent off to Iwork, they are putting it in a format that each step we take moves us to the next step, you know, if we have to violate somebody and they need to pay a fine, and we go that process, and it ultimately goes down to Devin, and he signs off on it, comes to you guys, you sign off on it, and then we make whatever determination at that point in time that we're gonna do with it. So ultimately, it comes down to the council making the decision on fines or anything like that. Again, we didn't really want to go the fine route, but we've got some people that just aren't participating with the letters that have been sent out, we've gave them more than enough time, so Devin and I talked about this, and we felt like it was time to go ahead.
Agree with the fines.
Yeah.
You gotta get something in motion.
Right, on our permit management part of it, we were staying busy, right now I've got probably five active full residential houses being built at this time that haven't been, haven't given a certification of occupancy yet. We've got several additions, smaller projects that we've got going as well. So I turned into Kenny this evening with the new website we're planning. Iwork has a program that directly goes into our website that people can apply for a permit, they can report a violation, a code violation, you know, whether it be trash, whether it be vehicles, whatever the case may be, through the website, and that way we can track them, that way, it's an additional cost there, Kenny's got that, I think it's $1,500 a year for that to be added to the website, so, you know, that's for your consideration there, and if you have any questions. All right?
You filling in?
I'm filling in.
You're up.
Sorry I'm late.
No problem.
I was out doing what y'all pay me to do.
That's good.
So this one over March stats, we had 193 calls per service, we made 24 arrests, Rudder gave out 44 warnings, and we wrote five tickets. Majority of our arrests this month was drug-related, we arrested two suspected drug dealers in town last month, we seized over 84 grams of meth, heroin, and fentanyl altogether, park cameras aided in identification of individuals who vandalized the park last weekend, so we've never worked that out. All the full-time guys went through a program called ACT OUT, which is training that goes along with de-escalation, other state mandates that require by law enforcement. And then we've had lots of positive interactions with the public, made a traffic stop a couple weeks ago, ended up getting into an argument with a guy, and then he came back to the police department like an hour later, apologized, and thanked us for being professional in the way that we did after himself, so, all good things. And then I also spoke to the audience called Chris Bailey before he became Dr. and shooters all, so.
Good, good, good. Only thing I'd like to see to just stop in the businesses occasionally, a couple I go to don't know who you are.
Okay, specifically?
How? I don't want to name them, but just stop in, just stop in occasionally and say hello, tell them who you are.
Okay, if they see us out, tell them, improve and stop, stop those waves, talk to us, so, more than welcome.
Because I'd rather they call you instead of me.
I would too, I would too, so.
And they would rather they stop you than stop them.
That's right.
That's true.
A whole lot of times if they see you out, they don't know if you're busy or not.
True.
So if you stop into their business, then just say, hey.
Need anything?
Yeah.
Sure. Hi, I'm so-and-so, if you need us, call.
Do anything that's, you know, been happening, or just, you know, you do that on a monthly basis, they'll get more attention to you and.
True.
Number one, any questions?
Thank you.
Great job.
Appreciate it.
Keith?
So, quick treasure side things, things are going well, we're still plodding along, we've got a lot of new things going on with the website that we're excited about that will help streamline some things. Obviously, Romley's announcement tonight is exciting because that streamlines our office and that directly affects the water and sewer bills, and then just the proper readings and the things that people worry about all the time, so we're excited about that. But I will announce one thing tonight, goes back to our park meeting that we had, donations, for our parks, just, it's crazy the amount of injected financial support that we've had in our park because of the energy that's been involved, and I truly think that the overall community excitement seems to be generated around what we set out two and a half years ago when we made an agreement that it was time to go all in towards our park, and I think it is making an impact in our community more than just our park, more than just in numbers of softball and baseball players, so, and you're seeing that in monetary donations that are coming out and giving more people quality of life for our community, so I think that's a great compliment, because we budgeted extra in our apartment, now we're getting it to be able to utilize in other places, and that's pretty cool.
We're getting a return for investment.
Absolutely, Kenny met with one of our neighboring properties just this past weekend, looking to grow our parking lot in the back, and just a lot of exciting stuff that's happening here, so, I know that's kind of switching off from clerk treasurer into town administrator.
Can you give an update on that, because I know we just had our park meeting, but Scott really didn't talk much about Rainbow, can you give an update on that?
I was gonna kind of speak for Scott Williams, today Scott went up and picked up, what is it? Scott had went up to Indianapolis, he left early this morning, like 5:00, went to Indianapolis and picked up our playground equipment, so they've got it back to the shop now, they're gonna start working on that, that all goes to Rainbow Park, so it's gonna be super exciting over there. Basically, the update that I have for you right now is, we went through and stripped the ground out for the walking trail that's gonna go around it, the parking area, the basketball court. The existing old basketball court will become a new pickleball court, and then there'll be a new half-court basketball court, it'll be more than, I mean, it's a good-sized half-court basketball court, that we'll be able to utilize our new goal, the new court donated last year that we were waiting to put up until we got our court where we wanted it, so those things are gonna happen here in the next, when the plants open up, basically it's been a delay due to the weather that we've had, but I would say in the next 30 to 45 days, I mean, it's weather permitting, right, and we're raining now, so, but 30 to 45 days, you'll see a new walking trail all the way around, you'll see, we've already planted 40 trees, 37.
40 rainbows.
40 rainbows. We'll have a new basketball court, new pickleball court, new playground equipment, first time since it's been started, probably, I guess, the way it looks, I mean, the equipment that's there, the way it looks, so, pretty exciting, so, appreciate Scott going and did that, the guys will be working on putting that together, so, and that's all thanks to the community that.
I mean, Kenny's offered some, putting that equipment together, is that something that?
I don't know, Scott, actually, he brought it back, I said, let's break out the instructions.
I think there may be some plans there right now to tear out some of the stuff that's there.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll have some, we'll have some projects over there where we want to get rid of some of the things that's there that's all of this.
College kids love to destroy stuff, so.
They can't, they can't, yours can't start till spring term.
Yeah, they, well, yeah, just because dead weekend finals, we have next week, so, yeah, but that's still just 30 days, so.
There's definitely some work.
Timing might work out well, to be able to utilize them for something like that, definitely work well over here at the park, but that's where that update's at. We were able to start cleaning some things up down the street, preparing for some other things we're gonna do, but I know Scott's working on, when the weather permits, we're gonna try to work on the drainage through that area and down that street, so that we can start getting some water flow out there the way it's supposed to, and so.
Yeah, we've got the brewing on the newer Bobcat, and we'll have both Bobcats over there, see what we can do, so, but.
What about the handicap swing for here, since we're talking about playground equipment? The ball's in your court and Scott Davidson.
We got a donation.
The donation I sent it to you guys.
Yeah, we can do that, I just, to be honest with you, we've got a lot of, I mean, I don't want to let that ball drop, but I've been the point person since Scott's been working on, Scott Davidson's been working on the park like he has, my point's been on this.
So the city told me it took him two months to get there, so.
We can order it right away, because we have someone that utilizes, drives into the park over here and utilizes swings in this, and so.
We need to let the donor know exactly how much, because it's probably gone up since the city got it, I sent you that in the mail.
That'll be on my list to take.
But Daddy's already told the person that we questioned it, that I've got a donor and we're gonna be getting it, so.
We'll get on it.
I'll send you a reminder.
Okay, the, if there's something else I want to update, you sure you want to send it something, but things are going great, there's just a lot of.
Right, oh, I know.
I've had people ask me about it for the law court over here, this.
I don't know where at this time we'd put it.
Yeah, and that's why I said, I don't know.
We've talked about it a little bit in different places, and they mentioned it, different things, but there's no set place for it at this time.
Right.
We can maybe do something with tennis courts when we do the, tear out this summer, and we tear it all out and rebuild it, and probably put one of them.
Yeah, like I said last, so.
We could probably do something with it, I can ask them, I'm sure they've built many.
But other than that, kind of great things.
And more to come.
Yeah, oh, another quick little update, you know, it's completely, obviously, outside of the town of Hannover, just a little update, been working, I've been trying to help be the middle person a little bit with the community garden folks that are trying to get, fight the corner, fight on Madison Avenue, sounds like probably have one of the residents rehomed by this weekend, and then we'll, the other one is still in service, so if anybody knows of a place.
For the trailer who goes?
The trailers are too old, they're not, they're not gonna be able, just them.
Possibly, right, that hurt.
They wouldn't make it very long, so, but, but, just trying to help, I mean, the goal there is not to see anybody just be booed as much as just try to help them get rehomed.
Is there a timeframe there?
Timeframe is April 10th, so you've got all kinds of time to work on it.
Wow, well, on Madison, Indiana News, they just published a list of rentals, so, get on there and work.
The problem is, is helping this person find out how to afford some of the rentals, because I, last time, I mean, if you look at the cost of rentals right now, it's, I don't know how anybody pays for your rentals in Washington, but just looking for an opportunity to get.
What will they do?
I don't know, so, we're trying, so, plans were to be coming in, start doing some things out, get it set up for the community garden to get rolling this spring, but could be in a minor delay, but we're making progress. One of the trucks from one of the trailers has been hauled off, it's sitting there strapped, so they know and they're ready, but that's kind of where we are on that.
Scott, what do you have, anything?
No, I mean, we've been busy doing, just, we haven't started mowing yet, but I, you know, when this rain quits, I had to take a day and a half, I was mowing around each week. I am going through things, Donnie Dykes is having another auction, April 23rd, you know, I was talking with Keith the other day, and we have an extra van, I want to make sure it rain, it's gonna rain more if it's running and it's set there for a while, but get, I guess I'll get with Keith on what I got, to get the okay.
To auction off?
Yes, just stuff that, just sitting around, we've been.
Scraping the, you can tell them about your scrap.
Oh, yeah, the belt press that we couldn't give away to the other towns, I called the scrapyard, and steel was $300 a pound.
Or a ton.
Ton, a pound, but anyway.
I might just take my vehicle.
Yeah, I'm selling everything I got, but anyway, we got $1,500, and I believe it's worth a check and square.
That's good.
Yeah, so, me and Daddy and Stuart spent a couple days taking our part, and it worked out, and Stuart and Scott went and got the field mix for our fields, so.
Oh, yeah. Luckily, they haven't been mowed, because you can't do a lot of their stuff.
Yeah, we've, I mean, we've been busy, Ezra's working on the old barn, and Keith's coming in too.
And you left at 5:00 this morning to get playground equipment?
Pardon?
You left at 5:00 this morning to get playground equipment?
Well, I was gonna leave at 5:00, but they didn't open till 8:00, so.
Oh, well, you still went.
Yeah, yeah, we got it in the new barn over there, and Keith had a good idea, we'll probably, when the time comes, kind of string it out and put together what we can right there.
Was it all crated nice?
Yeah, and they, I pulled it out back and they set it on there, I had to wait about 30 minutes for them to crate it up, but yeah, it's all packaged up. Haven't seen any directions yet, but we'll figure it out, all I need is a picture.
I didn't think you looked at directions.
I don't, I need a picture though.
Well, you don't need no stick and directions.
I think that's why you put the directions on there, very hard, I'm trying to look at them, but sorry.
We might have a bucket of moats left, but it'll be together.
Yeah.
Anything else for Scott? Old business, Go Green Committee?
I'm still working on that, I've been drawing the name and approach, I've got one individual interested, and I think he says someone, but I haven't talked to him for a couple days, so, we're still working with it.
Website, we met today with the homepage developer, Tom Rose, and I think we had a really good meeting, would you say that did?
Yeah, it worked really well.
I think it worked real good, he's gonna have something for us early next week for the homepage, and from what we saw today, it looked really good, it had everything that we were asking for, so on that part, we're really good. I think the Civic Rec part that we met about last week, he should have something for us this week, by the end of the week, I think, on the rec part, the only question that we were having was filling, and I think we've worked that out, so, I think everything on the website's probably just about a week behind from the original homepage, but I think Tom's gonna get us caught up pretty good when we do share it, so, I think we're still in that 10 to 12 week.
So Rick was talking about the program that he wants added to the website, and that's gonna be 1,500 extra a year on top of the little 11? Children's still 111?
Yeah, sure. The information's here, but I haven't included it yet.
Yeah, okay.
And that will be something I will talk to the website people about also. There's always a good deal out there somewhere, so let's see if we can get that done.
Sure, okay.
APR plan, we've had a, we've had a meeting about it, we'll have several more.
Working progress.
It's absolutely a work in progress, just like Ron said, there's money there, you want to put it in the right places, so there's a lot of places for us to put it, and every single dollar we use of it's gonna be great for the whole town, park, everything, so.
So I'll call a work session in the next week or so, so whenever second week.
Gosh. Let's see, parking lot, Keith briefly mentioned about the meeting back there with the gentleman who were Third Street plus Rogers, yeah, Mr. Rogers, first time I've met a really nice guy, had to go to it, and they chewed up my shirt, my sweatpants.
They chased us.
Yeah, they were all over me, they just kept fighting me, he said they were urgent, I'm like, well, okay, but nice guy, really nice guy, and, and really acts like he'd like to help do some things for the town, so we may do some committee for him or something like that down the road, and he's very nice to talk to, we had a great discussion about the land, I told him we needed as many spaces as we could get, so we stepped everything off, and he's asking for a privacy fence from the corner of the park to the edge of his property line, which is the length of the parking lot that exists right now, and it looked like what he was gonna give us was probably gonna add about 35 to 40 spaces, but we're gonna have to do some work, I know Keith's already talked to some people about removing all the trees we need removed, obviously that would cost us some money, but in the long run, get people out of people's yards over here and everything, and 35 to 40 spaces factors, huge, until we can get this developed on the website, so, he's, Rick Walker, he's ready to go, and whenever we're ready to go, so.
What are they building back here now?
His sister's putting a house.
Okay.
So it's divided in three, all the way, three tracks basically, and his sister's the one closest to the trailer.
Two of them.
So the parking is back behind that?
Yeah, it's pretty much the trail that's back there now, but I met with her, yeah, I shared with Kenny, and I've got the measurements over at C D N's, so Rod can kind of calculate exactly how much space we need to get the maximum spaces, so like, the area that he showed Kenny that we could go to, if we found out, hey, if we could gain four more feet, you get another row of parking spaces, then I'm certain he would give us four more feet.
Sure.
If we find out that, hey, you got, in order to get a true another parking space, you need to be 14 more feet, so then we might as well back up, because it's not gaining us, and then just have four more feet of pavement to put down, and tear up something, so, it's just trying to get that exact balance of how much works exactly, he's willing to give away, the costs are, trees coming down, the excavation, the gravel, which, millings, Scott, are we getting pretty low on millings?
Yeah, we use most of them over here for the Rainbow.
Maybe we know a commissioner or two that might have access to some millings that we, but millings will be something that we might look at trying to, to gain, at least get us a base down for now, say, that saves a lot of cost if we can recycle those within our community, and then the other expense, obviously, as Kenny mentioned, is a privacy fence, it's not, he wants to make clear, it's not because he didn't want to be a good neighbor, he loves to be able to see it, it's more about when people are coming in, it's a straight shot at his back windows, he's like the headlights shining in his house, somebody comes in that parking sets, it's like, I just want it for that purpose, so, it's not to not be a neighbor.
I understand that.
So, there'll be a cost there. I'm gonna get a price on it. Scott and I have just got, fencing is a nightmare in general, seems like you find people wanna put a fence out.
As Kenny said, we really, really need a parking.
We have to.
Yeah.
Yesterday, so that's some of the costs that I'll try to report back to you guys as soon as possible so you guys can make an adjustment or move into how you wanna do it.
Rod's got everything in hand, though, right?
He does, yeah. I mean, we had budgeted four thousand dollars for, excuse me, ceiling and striping the back lot. Skip that, you know, I mean, ceiling at this moment is minor compared to what we could do and grow some space, so we'll use that money in a different direction at this moment.
Any other old business?
What's the reservation twenty-two? Set this to twenty-two dash one. It's like, we don't have anything.
Yeah, well, you did. So, basically, what that's tabled for is because they had just seen it for the first time.
Right.
And it was a matter of creating that board. It was something you guys proposed back, was it eighteen or nineteen, I believe, eighteen or nineteen? And it was distributed to you guys at the last meeting. They got it for the first time, and they were gonna talk about it. Did you guys get a chance to talk about that at all, Sharon? So, if you wanna table it for another meeting and rehuddle something that needs to be addressed so that you guys can get that signed, resolved. It needs, I mean, it needs to happen.
You did your own op, didn't you?
Well, you printed it earlier, you must know.
Yeah, this is updated.
I gave you one, it's there, there should be a new one there.
We're taking it anyway, so.
Everything's on there.
Okay, I got you.
Sorry. So, we just gotta table that? Well, we never have it in the other order.
No, no, no.
Are you?
You're doing great, Keith. Appreciate you.
Keep going, Kenny.
Your old business.
You're gonna table that?
Gonna table that.
It's on your job, Sharon.
New business, ordinance, twenty-two dash four, no parking ordinance.
That's for me, yeah.
That's you.
An ordinance of the town council amending the no parking ordinance. This is what we discussed also a long time ago, but apparently never made it to a written form. Since we have the ordinance, I was able to just go to the back section, which is the parking schedule related to the no parking zones. So, the section and all that is, basically, I just said to remove and replace chapter seventy-two parking schedules and schedule one and the section that defines the exact place of B two. So, B two parking show, basically states that parking shall not be permitted at the following locations: On either side of West Street between Crowe and Main. On either side of Crowe between Main and West LaGrange Road. On either side, and I kind of wrote this, I wasn't, it's kind of hard to envision, but on either side of North and or South Sycamore Drive between Thornton Road and back to Thornton Road. And I put parentheses, the entire loop, Sycamore Drive. When I looked it on the map, I'm like, "I don't know." On either side of Maple Street between Thornton and Sycamore. On either side of November between Greenbrier and October Street, that's another one that kind of has an odd loop. On either side of October Street between Greenbrier and November Street. On either side of Bowles between State Road fifty-six or West LaGrange Road and Hager Drive. That was what, that's all of them now.
That was what she, they had explained about the last time.
So, I think that's all of them, that's what Shane had sent me. I think we should do this on a first reading and then do comments if there's any at the next meeting, then pass it to the next meeting. That was the first reading.
I already had ten signs that I'd ordered for those, but it says, "No parking on this side of the street."
So, do we need to make a motion to approve the first reading? I'll make a motion to approve the first reading ordinance, two thousand twenty-two dash four, no parking ordinance.
Any discussion? Old person.
And Kenny, your additional one is ordinance twenty-two-two dash five, and it's the one amending the cable advisory ordinance. I'm gonna try to read that. Do you wanna try to read one with first reading on it as well?
So, this is an ordinance amending certain portions of the town's cable advisory ordinance at interlocal agreement. Whereas the town council previously adopted a cable advisory board ordinance and corresponding interlocal agreement now finds it necessary to amend such ordinance, whereas the town council desires to amend the cable advisory board ordinance in order to have a better and fully functioning cable advisory board, and whereas the town council seeks to correct an error previously made to such ordinance and hereby adopts the following. Now therefore be ordained by the town council that the cable advisory board ordinance previously enacted be amended specifically to amend the members section to reflect the number of board members from each unit shall be reduced from three to two. Be further ordained by the town council that the cable advisory board ordinance previously enacted will be amended to amend the duties to remove the portion that reads, "Currently approved by the local governmental units." This ordinance shall become immediately effective upon its adoption by the town council and publication of the notice as required by law. Any ordinance in conflict with this ordinance is hereby repealed. So, with the first reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of twenty-two-two dash five, equal TV advisory board.
Any discussion?
I just remember that portion about, currently approved by the local government units, that's not a thing anymore. It's approved at the state level, that's why it doesn't make a review.
There's no? Any other new business? Sewer adjustments.
We've got a sewer adjustment request for Hanover College property at three fifty Sandy Island Avenue, an amount of a hundred and eleven dollars and nine cents. It was an exterior water spigot leak, and it's like they could attach proof of repair, so.
Are you, you hear the motion? I'll second.
Okay.
Any more stuff? Old person.
Before we go any further, I wonder, you were copying an email from Troy Morgan. I wanted to get a quick update on the fence and make sure you guys are all okay with the process that this is gonna be. So, we've been fully funded by the federal government for our fence down the sewer project. Still working, trying to iron out exactly who's gonna get to do that work and when they're willing to do it. But the guy did call me back, by the way, Scott.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, and very interested still. He's apologized, had some things going on. Long story short, that process, the money is there, but it's a reimbursement process, as most people know. I did it. So, having that in mind, we're in like rapid pace for our sewer project with the college, and we're spending money from the first, from all the engineering that we agreed on. We talked about, rather than taking away, if we have to borrow, we're gonna borrow from our own savings. We're gonna probably be doing that, so we're not gonna have to do it between now and the next meeting, but I just wanna prepare you that if you say it, I'll keep people loose. We anticipate, but we'll get reimbursed on.
We do have insurance, we're gonna be reimbursed.
Yes, absolutely. Now, there's no gray area there, I'm just letting you know that we will potentially have to do that.
And that's how I'm ready to be, to start with.
The only bad thing about fencing now is you can't get multiple boards. There's just nobody.
No.
That's what I say, it's tough, so no one, Scott and I've tried for two years to get fencing closed.
I know.
And then you get them, and then they disappear on you, so. But, you know, that's everything, really, quite honestly, and they're probably frustrated. People are going out of business because they can't get materials.
That's right.
They get part, and they can't get this, so it's very frustrating times for everyone, so.
I'll give you a name later.
Okay, so, long story short, that's where we're at. I wanted to make sure, we got the email, we knew where we were, I hadn't told you guys yet. It's been a while, it's been three weeks.
It will look fantastic down there to get that.
So, we're working on doing.
You cleaned it up.
How far out?
It's almost right now.
Pardon me?
How far out would be?
He said, "Towards the end of May," and he said he'd take two, at the most, three weeks to finish it. I told him I'd talked to you, I hadn't had a chance. He just called me back yesterday, so. The more important thing is, is the moving of the money, so you're able to do it because our cash flow on sewer won't keep up with all this, probably.
But you have it looking great down there, Scott.
Yeah, they've been working harder on it.
Very hard.
All the buildings and all the cleanups have been directed.
Trash is all over.
As good as a sewer tree and a plant can look, right?
It is. It is.
But, sorry, I just thought of that, I wondered where we were going through.
Council table?
I'll make a motion to approve the council cable vouchers, an amount of a hundred and ninety-one thousand eighty dollars and fifty-two cents.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Old person.
Aye.
Announcement. Next annual town council meeting will be held on Tuesday, April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at six P M. Here at the Hanover Community Center, two hundred and Bruce Wayne, Hanover, Indiana, four seven two four three. Town hall will be closed next Friday, April fifteenth, and in service Good Friday. Also, we'll go ahead and mention that the extravaganza Easter egg hunt will be here on Saturday, starting at ten o'clock, and there's gonna be games, bouncy houses, food, lots of prizes, and I'm sure it's gonna be a great turnout, so hopefully a lot of people turn out for that and have good weather. Anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Old person.
Aye.
Thank you.